Yes.
Okay, I'd like to thank all of you and welcome all of you here to our Idaho Soil and Water Conservation Commission on January eighteenth. We'll start off, I have introductions. And with that, go ahead, Delwin, take it off.
Delwin Tress, Soil and Water Conservation Commission, and I'm here in the Boise office, just invisible.
Wendy Pratt with the Commission for Blackfoot.
Kathy Romer with the Commission.
Eric Olson with the Commission.
Crystal Rosen with ISWCC.
Tom Manuel, Idaho County Soil Conservation District.
New Orleans with the Commission.
Rachel Nussman with the Commission, sorry, the inversion's getting me.
Devon Fielding, IASC Division Five Director and fourth thing, Soil Conservation District.
Okay, on Zoom, we have with us.
You have Joan Cloonan.
Shane Bell from the IASC.
Dan Steenson, Attorney with the Lower Boise Watershed Council and Treasure Valley Water Users Association.
Hi, good morning, I'm Roger Batt, I'm the Executive Director of the Treasure Valley Water Users Association.
Stephanie Barnes with the Butte Soil and Water Conservation District in Arco.
Welcome, go ahead, Joan.
Joan Peterson with the Commission.
Okay, thanks, Joe, go ahead, Joan, this time.
Oh. Are you talking to Joan? Joan Cloonan with the IASC Board and Ada Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay, do we have anybody else online? Yeah, are there anybody on the phone, just by themselves there? I'd like to introduce themselves. Do we have anybody on the phone?
I actually was not able to get the global meet to work.
Okay.
Try it again.
Okay, with that, welcome all of you to our meeting, and we'll hear from many of you in the very near future.
Mr. Chairman, we need to do roll call first.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman Norman Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Kathy Romer.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Pratt.
Here.
Okay, with that, we're down to card your reports. Delwin, is there someone that we want to feature here besides the rest, or what?
No, this would be just for our traditional partners.
Okay.
I don't see any right now.
Uh, our traditional partners, no one that's on there from the Soil Conservation Commission, NRCS? Okay, would somebody like to talk to us from ISCD? Joan Clemon, do you want to do that? Anything there you want to say?
Well, I, I'm pretty new to the IASC, so I just appreciate being here and listening in. A, we had a good meeting yesterday, and I think most of you were there, so I, at this point, I wasn't really prepared to start off, start off your meeting.
Right? That's all right, you, you're a great lady, you, you can take the tight stuff, you can handle it. Gavin here, sitting here next to me, we could pin on him.
You can talk to him.
Are you on the bus?
Thank you, though.
I'll say a word, Adam, I'm sorry, through you on the bus?
Thank you for, thank you to the Commission for the support you give to the districts, and look forward to working with you from here. Maybe, or thank you.
Appreciate that. Does anybody else want to say anything at this time? If not, we'll go ahead, item three is a general review, I know of no changes, so we'll take it the way it is. That puts us down to item number four, Water Quality Program for Agricultural Update. I think, Mr. Krebs, you're going to take this one?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, I, I will introduce this. Staff are working with representatives of ISCD, NRCS, the Idaho Water Users Association, Treasure Valley Water Users Association, Lower Boise River Watershed Council, and others to secure state funding for the Water Quality Program for Agriculture, our old WACPA program. For more than a decade, WACPA enabled conservation districts to provide financial assistance to landowners for BMP implementation projects designed to address water quality concerns. The last year, WACPA received an appropriation of state funds, which was 2011. As you are aware, the governor's fiscal year 2023 budget does not include funding for WACPA. However, our partners and interested stakeholders intend to continue to work with legislators to secure an appropriation through the legislative process. Our current WACPA policy, last revised in 2009, is attached. Current policy lists the following as the criteria upon which funding decisions shall be based: completed agricultural TMBL implementation plan, groundwater quality management plan, or watershed plan developed through the USDA PL 566 program, cooperative river basin survey, state agricultural water quality program, or equivalent process, ESA status is another criteria, groundwater quality protection area, beneficial uses affected, relative ability of the proposed treatment to protect the resource, readiness of project sponsor to proceed, readiness of watershed participants to implement the plan, availability of technical assistance, and availability of supplementary funding sources. Over the last decade, water concerns in Idaho have expanded to include more than pollution-related water quality issues. Today, water use efficiency has become a significant focus of water users and water regulators. A host of factors contribute to the heightened emphasis on the efficient use of water, including changes to historical weather patterns, which appear to be resulting in increased frequency and severity of drought conditions, and the need to increase productivity in order to feed a growing population. Considering these realities, staff recommend our WACPA policy be modified to add water use efficiency to the program's funding criteria. As a member of the Lower Boise Watershed Council and an attorney with extensive experience in water rights, water quality, agricultural, and environmental law, Dan Steenson is here to share his perspective on the modifications necessary to apply WACPA to water efficiency-related projects. And Chairman, I'm also happy to note that Roger Batt has joined us, and he identified himself earlier in the introductions as a Executive Director of the Treasure Valley Water Users Association. So I'm going to turn the time over, at this point, to Dan and Roger, and let them speak about the changes to policy that they see as important going forward with the WACPA funding process. So Dan, Roger?
Thanks, Delwin, may I share the screen?
Yes, give me just a moment.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Dan, I've made you host, so that you'll be able to share your screen as host.
Mr. Chairman, if, can I say a few things while Dan's getting ready, if that would be okay?
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, Treasure Valley Water Users Association, as all of you already know, represents irrigation delivery entities within Boise River Basin 63. And besides being protective of our water rights and our irrigation delivery and storage, one of the goals and objectives we've had is improvement of water quality within the basin. And so we are very committed as an organization to this, and we appreciate the time on the agenda this morning to talk about WACPA and adding this additional policy measure. We'll be working at the legislature close with the Joint Finance and Appropriations Committee members to get the necessary funding for this and other programs to improve water quality in the basin here. So, just want to say that, and to say thank you very much again for having us today.
Thank you.
Okay, you should be able to see a document that's entitled Water Resource Investment Plan. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the, the background for this, what I think we all see as an opportunity to advocate for resuming WACPA is really several fold. One is the state surplus, which by now I'm sure you've heard is on the order of projected to be, or estimated to be on the order of $1.9 billion. Forecasts that have been presented to a, one of the Jermaine Legislative Committees forecast revenues of in excess of $5 billion in, in the next few fiscal years, which is a quantum leap from the height of $4 million, $4 billion over, in prior years. So there's the state surplus. The other is ARPA funding, which I'm sure you all have heard about, and the, the uses of a portion of the ARPA funding that's available to the state for water infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure projects, that's the second. And the third is the infrastructure bill, which contains a number of appropriations for, of a wide variety of water-related programs administered by agencies like the Bureau of Reclamation, NRCS, the Army Corps, and so on. So these three sources of funding are injecting, frankly, massive amounts of capital to all the states, including, well, the state surplus is unique to Idaho, massive amounts of capital to Idaho. So, the question is, for water infrastructure, what's the plan? How, how should the state deploy and invest these funds? That are available to it, and it depends on what limitations there are, if any, on any of the, on the eligible uses for any program. ARPA has some parameters. The state surplus is relatively free of, of conditions. Infrastructure funding, of course, those, the, the funding that's been appropriated to the various agencies will be deployed in, consistent with the agency's practices and guidance and statutory authorities. So, with that background, Roger and I, and others have been working with the Idaho Water Use Association, and specifically the Executive Director, Paul Arrington, and Benjamin Kelly, to, to formulate this plan. A significant amount of the funding that's available will be allocated to the Idaho Water Resource Board, and the governor's, and perhaps you've seen it by now, the governor's budget recommendation contains a significant amount of money to the, to Idaho Water Resource Board. That money will be utilized, I believe, primarily for large water projects, like the raising of Anderson Ranch Dam to increase storage peaks, like the conveyance of water for the Mountain Home Air Force Base drinking water supplies, and, and the like. There's also a significant amount of, of funding that will be allocated to DEQ, and if this is, tell me if this document is large enough for y'all to read, and if it's not, I can enlarge it.
Yeah, could you enlarge it just a bit, please?
You bet.
Thank you. Oh, very good, thank you.
Okay, and this is the part that's really interesting. This is a proposal that we developed before the governor announced his budget. So these numbers are subject to a lot of change. The governor basically has set the table for the budget discussion now for the legislature to take over through JFAK and other Jermaine Committees. And so, the wa, the Idaho Water Users, in addition to supporting funding for IDWR staff to administer programs that it doesn't have the staff to administer, Idaho Water Resource Board funding, this amount, you know, this is not the amount that the governor recommended. This was an amount based on a JFAK chairman's estimate of the magnitude of the demand, but as I mentioned, a significant amount of some of the Water Resource Board. And then, in addition to funding to DEQ, we are proposing that, as Delwin mentioned, the resumption of funding for WACPA. Why are we doing that? Currently, DEQ provides state funding for ag BMP projects through the Ag BMP Grant Program. And it's had $500,000 to $1 million over the last several years for that program. And that program is specifically targeted to projects that will reduce loading of sediment and phosphorus and other pollutants from ag fields to impaired water bodies. So to get funding from that program, you have to show that you're adversely impacting a, an impaired stream. Now, I want to digress from this, if you don't mind, stop sharing this. Now, the Soil Conservation Districts have, for years, been the primary subscriber or applicant for DEQ's grant programs. What you're seeing here is a list of Soil Conservation District projects funded by DEQ's federal 319 grant program over the last 20 years. And the statistics are that when you compare the Soil Conservation District applications to others, the Soil Conservation District applications have constituted over half of the applications for grants from the, from DEQ's grant program. That's the federal program. So, what is this show? This shows that the Soil Conservation Districts have continued to be the primary agency involved in ag BMP implementation in the state of Idaho, as you already know. Similarly, and, and to a greater extent, the Soil Conservation Districts have been the majority applicant for state ag BMP grants, more on the order, getting more on the order of, let me see. Some, by my calculation, 81% of state-funded projects were Soil Conservation District projects. So, state funding is already going through DEQ to Soil Conservation Districts to help producers who work with the Soil Conservation Districts to implement projects. So, appropriations going through one agency of the state to another agency of the state to help producers. So, we can certainly demonstrate that, and I, I just need to ask, am I back to that outline of funding that I shared with you earlier? Are you seeing that again?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, advocating for resumption of WACPA now, the Soil Conservation Districts are uniquely poised to be able to work with producers to deploy funds for ag BMPs in, in the relatively short timeframes that will be expected by the legislature and the federal agencies that are providing this funding, generally a five-year period. And secondly, the Soil, the WACPA program, we believe, especially with the modification to your policy, if you make it, that Delwin mentioned, can, can provide funding to a wider range of projects, not just those where you can show there's runoff going into a listed stream. Also, projects where, even though there may not be that runoff, there's a significant water conservation benefit, or a soil conservation benefit, or a water efficiency benefit. Now, a lot of the projects that the Treasure Valley Water Users Association have identified as the top, the projects for which our members would potentially seek funding include headgate renovation, or replacement, or repair, canal lining, piping, and, and similar projects to, to upgrade aging infrastructure, to improve the delivery of water and the conservation of water. So, in addition to on-farm projects that have non-discharge-related benefits, there are water delivery system and drainage system projects that may have non-discharge-related benefits, for which there's a significant demand for funding. So we think WACPA can fill that gap between the large projects that the Water Resource Board will likely be providing funding for, like Anderson Ranch Dam raise, and the water quality discharge-related projects that DEQ will continue to provide funding for through its federal and state ag BMP grant programs. And filling that gap, we think, is WACPA to provide funding for a broader range of projects that don't necessarily have water quality ties, that are smaller in size than those in the Water Resource Board will find it. So, what you're looking at, this outline, has been approved by the Idaho Water Users Association Legislative Committee in concept. So, IWA will be advocating for this. It's also been approved by the Treasure Valley Water Users Association Board of Directors. So Roger and I, for the Treasure Valley Water Users Association, will be advocating for this investment plan, including significant funding for WACPA. Where does $10 million come from? $10 million is, some of you, all of you may remember, several years ago, when Roger and I and others were advocating for state funding for ag BMP projects, which resulted in the state ag BMP grant program. We were also talking with your director and many of your members and, and district representatives, including Ben, about resuming WACPA. For various reasons, it didn't happen at the time, but at the time, your, your state director put together a list of, a list of projects that were candidates for funding through Conservation Districts, and that list aggregated $10 million. So that's where that number comes from. Also, what I, what we think is going to happen is, what we'd like to advocate for is resuming WACPA through a $10 million appropriation to be deployed over a five-year period, $2 million a year, to demonstrate that WACPA is worth funding, is effective. That's the same approach we took with the ag, the state ag BMP grant program, and another program that the legislature recently created for flood management grants. So, we felt like there's a, there's a historical basis for this number. We also felt like $2 million a year was doable. You, I mean, you all know what, as better than I am sure, what these projects cost. It won't be, I don't think, hard to deploy $2 million a year to conversion projects and the types of projects that I've mentioned. So, if, if this concept makes sense to you, we certainly need your, your support for it. Then the question is, how, how do we advocate it to the legislature? When one might say, as some have said to me, well, there are, the, the districts are already getting plenty of funding through DEQ, why, why do we need this additional program? Our argument is, one, the districts are the, you know, why, why have funding go through one agency to fund another agency's work? And with the compressed timeframes that these funds are going to need to be expended, you need a, what I would call a rapid deployment agency. You needed an agency with offices throughout the state that can touch and reach and work with producers quickly, and are familiar with producers. That's the, that, that, I just described the Soil Conservation Districts when it comes to ag BMP implementation. Uh, so there's an efficiency advantage, an experience advantage, to providing the funding directly to the Soil Conservation Districts, to the Soil Conservation Commission. And then, then the, the other, the other part that Delwin and I have mentioned is, we would need to make sure the WACPA program can provide funding, the policies that you utilize are broad enough to provide funding to the broader range of projects I've described. Again, not just those that discharge have a loading effect on impaired waters. So, Commissioners, that's the, that's the idea, and that's why you're hearing from me this morning. We're ready to go forward, we need to move quickly on this. The, the, the arena now is, as has been mentioned, with the legislature, and specifically with JFAK members, we have a meeting set up. Help me, Roger, for what, February?
It's on February 3rd, Dan, in the House Caucus Room upstairs.
February 3rd, where, where, with your support, we want to explain, basically what I just explained, to those JFAK members. So with that, Roger, I guess I ask you to take it from there.
That sounds great, you did a great job explaining all of that. I, it's my understanding, is there a potential NRCS match to this too, Dan?
Yeah, and as, as you all well know, so Curtis Alkey, who is on assignment to another district office, I guess, at this point, and Amy, who I think you all know is standing in for her right now, but anyway, Curtis is very supportive of resuming WACPA. He is now, and he was five years ago when we were talking about it. And he's helped us make the case to the governor's staff, though they didn't, they've been too far along in their thinking to reverse, you know, to, to add, to, to, to take up our proposal. But he was with us, he's been with us in advocating to the governor's staff that if, if the state will resume WACPA, there's a great deal that he can do. I guess I'm supposed to admit somebody now that I'm the host. I think I just admitted someone named Clinton. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Franklin, that's fine, I can take hosting duties back if you'd like, Dan.
Yeah, unless you need to continue looking at this proposal, you could certainly take it from, please.
Okay.
Uh, so Curtis Alkey is very supportive, and he's to make his budget request for the state of Idaho, I thought was going to be this month, maybe it's already happened. And his point is that with a close working relationship with, between the NRCS and the Soil Conservation Districts, I mean, Canyon County, they work out of the same office, right? They can work closely together, but as boots on the ground, and NRCS funding can match WACPA funding, if it's available, to provide a much higher grant percentage for a project. Delwin can probably address that or explain it better than I, but the, the, the opportunity for working with NRCS and obtaining additional funding through NRCS, I think, is greatly enhanced through the WACPA program.
Yeah, yeah, Dan, Chairman, if I could, to kind of build on what Dan just talked about, Curtis's commitment, and it's a verbal at this point, but as in 2017, the last time we had serious talks about refunding WACPA, at that time Curtis committed one-to-one match to, to, to us from NRCS funds, and he's indicated that he's going to pursue that again, if we get WACPA funding this year. And as Dan described it, WACPA can be used to, we used to call it piggyback, back in the day, piggyback cost share with 319 funding, with other federal funding, and with equip and NRCS funding. So, what Dan's talking about is we, we double the bang for our buck by leveraging state funds, or whatever funding gets appropriated to WACPA with federal dollars as well. So it's, it's.
Another thing that we've talked about too, is, is equip-only funds, you know, maybe half or less of the projects submitted, and there's a lot of good projects left on the table that could easily fall in this category.
That's, that's right.
We, we have experienced it with the Lower Boise Watershed Council. A lot of the projects we funded through our partnership between the Lower Boise Watershed Council and the Soil Conservation Districts have been projects that were turned away from equip funding.
Chairman, the other thing I wanted to jump in is, ask Loretta, Loretta collected a list of shovel-ready projects for this year, and Dan referenced this $10 million worth of projects that Carrie had in her list in 2017. Loretta, could you, could you remind me of what the project cost of that list you put together was?
I think it was actually 30 or 40 million, because I think Joe alone, it was 25 million.
Yeah.
The ADA Soil and Water Conservation District had a lot of projects.
Yeah.
Anyway, I can, my district's had a million, I lean up and work, it's been a million easy. So, it has grown, the cost of the projects to implement has grown.
Yes.
So, the need is there.
The need is definitely there, thanks, Loretta.
So here's the other question I've been getting, can the, can the Conservation Districts do it? If they get this funding, are they? Can the conservation districts do it? If they get this funding, do they have the staff? Are they going to need more staff to administer such a program? Because that was an issue with the proposal five years ago. And whether or not they need more staff, are they capable of deploying these funds? My argument is, first, they've been doing it already by applying to DEQ for the funds. They're the primary, as I said, customer, if you will, of the existing grant program. So they're already doing it. For, with DEQ, what happens is DEQ gets an appropriation, we're talking about the state program, and they open up annual grant cycle in April. And you have 30 to 60 days to apply, and then the basin advisory groups consider applications, and then DEQ acts. So within a three, four-month period, DEQ has reviewed and approved project applications on an annual cycle. What I'm hoping for is a model, that a model could be utilized through the Soil Conservation Commission of the districts, kind of like what the Lower Boise Water State Council does. We, the council, apply for what I call block grants. So we show a long history of success in implementing BMPs through our local ag BMP grant program. And the legislature enacted a statute last year to make it clear that funding is available for local ag BMP grant programs whereby the Lower Boise Water State Council is typically received on the order of $250,000 to then receive applications throughout the year, not just annually, and approve projects pursuant to established criteria throughout the year. What I would, then that's effective, and that's a rapid deployment, that's a continuous deployment model, right? Not just once a year. So what I'd be interested in is if, and I think those that we've been talking to, if the Soil Conservation Commission can utilize the same model with districts, in other words, the Conservation Commission receives funding from the legislature, and then districts, if they so choose, can make block grant applications to the commission so that they can fund projects throughout the year as they come in, rather than individual projects being presented by each district to the commission for approval once a year. You see the difference between those two models?
Yes.
That's a part of the policy question that Dylan mentioned at the beginning. Is that a model that the Conservation Commission and the districts can employ? And it still may be that, you know, districts are more comfortable with submitting individual projects to the commission for consideration. Then that's, that's fine. But if there are districts who want to utilize this continuous deployment, block grant model, is that a model that the commission would be comfortable with and able to employ?
And Dan, what you, that continuous application, project proposal program that you just described is how WAPPA has always been administered according to current policy. So there is a, I guess, borrow from NRCS's jargon, a continuous sign-up on WAPPA, and then depending how, what our appropriation is, you know, because of course, the program is dependent on annual appropriation, or always was. In any case, we fund until we're obligated, what's been appropriated to us. Yeah.
Okay, one more thing, and I should stop doing so much talking. But one more thing then is, what was it? Slipped my mind now. I had it and I lost it. Oh, rules. Your WAPPA rules were rescinded, what, last?
2019.
You don't have them anymore. Do you need them? My, what I suggest is that you don't. Neither the Idaho Water Resource Board administering their flood management grant program, nor DEQ administering their state ag BMP grant program have rules, administrative rules, to administer those programs. They have internal procedures that they've adopted, and we've, a lot of us have helped them put them together. So I don't believe you need to adopt, re-adopt, or have rules you can, to administer WAPPA. I think you can do it through procedures that you adopt without rulemaking.
Well, I like that idea, Dan.
She was saying things.
Shane, what do you think?
Sure. So I looked over the previous rules, and then I looked through the policy. Some of the language in the policy guidelines is really almost identical to the old rules, which is concerning for me because there's a lot of musts and shalls, and so if it looks like a rule and it talks like a rule, the court's going to say, hey, that's a rule. Specific example, that was in the potential non-compliance language. Like I said, nearly identical, and so you know, policy guidance is really only meant to direct agencies. It's not supposed to be outward to the public like rules are. So that's my big concern. And then I had one other concern. The previous rules indicated that the cost sharing program couldn't be provided for measures installed primarily for bringing additional land into production, and then measures installed primarily for increasing agricultural production on existing lands. Obviously, the key word there is primarily, so it's something that needs to be considered when we're adding the sufficiency language, and whether or not we're still trying to focus on that non-point source pollution as opposed to just solely doing it primarily for increasing production or bringing in other agricultural lands into production. So yeah, those are my concerns. Yeah, I can happily answer the questions on that.
Shane, did I hear you say that the primary purpose was to bring new lands into ag production? That that's one of the primary purposes in the rule?
No, it wasn't. And that's the concern. I think there was a third one that had to do with flood protection, that that couldn't be used as the primary purpose as well. And obviously, I mean, the rules aren't in effect, but somebody looking at the old rules could say, hey, did you just get rid of the rules so you could increase, you know, what you could use the money for? And that, you know, that'd be a decent argument. Whether or not, you know, that wasn't the reason for getting rid of the rules, I understand that, but it's something that might come up.
Yeah. I don't think that any, in the discussions I've had with stakeholders, there's been any interest in in sod busting, if you will, and increasing the number of irrigated acres out there.
Yeah, sorry to be a damp on that. I just wanted to make sure we talked about that.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
So other comments, you know, from a commission standpoint, Dan and Roger, I definitely think that we're obviously interested in involving WAPPA back in, because we believe there is a great need for it. And so therefore, you know, I'll let the others speak themselves, but I'm definitely on board with the idea. Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Kathy Romer, yeah, you know, you answered my question concerning the policy and the rules. That was one thing that I was wondering about because in the timeframe that these were written, and apparently we've x-ed them out, changes have been made, no doubt, in requirements and that sort of thing, guidelines that, you know, people that are doing projects would have to follow. So are you aware of anything that has changed that would make this less user-friendly or to people who are taking up projects? Because something has to be in place.
I'm sorry, was that to me?
Yeah, well, sure.
Yeah. I don't think the statutory language has changed that created the program. And so there's really nothing intermediate, though, in terms of rules that I'm aware of. It just goes straight down to policy. So from statute to policy.
The fact from, you know, what the space in between the DEQ funding and the IDWR funding, I think one selling point that could be made to the legislature, for those that have doubts, is the fact that the commission is solely involved in voluntary conservation efforts. We're not a regulatory agency like DEQ is. So I think if you've got some of those individuals in the legislature that are adamant about not giving money to agencies, I think that's a good selling point on, you know, saying, hey, these guys are connected with the farmers, connected with the ranchers very well, and, you know, my way, DEQ and EPA are a bad word, even to this day still, with some of the bad experiences that we've had. So the Conservation Commission with the districts has come in and filled the void, but a lot of times you run funding issues, and I think that this is a very, very excellent way to bridge that gap, so to speak.
What do you have anything on that?
Yeah, so I'll just weigh in and say, it sounds great. Why don't we ask for more? I mean, it really does seem a bit modest if it's 2 million a year compared to that list that Loretta had. So I'm sure there's a good explanation. Would you share that with us?
Of the amount?
Yeah. I mean, other than that's what was several years ago, but we all know what inflation's done.
I didn't have Loretta's list at the time. But this is also, you know, the art of advocacy is taking the temperature of the decision-makers. And so this seemed, based on our discussions with at least the governor's office, now we may get a different reaction at the legislature. But based on our reaction we're getting from the governor's office, we felt like this was in the realm of reason. But again, the governor's office didn't include WAPPA, despite our efforts in its recommendation. Although, after making its recommendation, the feedback that we got from the governor's staff is makes me, gives me the sense that they wouldn't be opposed necessarily to a resumption of WAPPA if the legislature chose to go that direction. So if these numbers are, the most difficult, one of the most difficult parts of this has been, what's the right number? What's the right ask? Well, how much is available? And what are, what appropriations are being considered for similar uses? So I think the baseline objective here is to get an appropriation, to get the program running again like we did with the flood management grant program, like we did with the ag BMP program, that were only funded, I mean, only to the tune of $500,000, you know, to $800,000, $500,000 a piece when we began them. The legislature began them. So get the program funded, get it running, show it works, and then, you know, modulate, modulate the appropriations as necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I agree with that. You know, one thing that I'm interested, I like the idea of when Danny and Roger talked about the idea that DEQ and Idaho Department of Water Resources don't have any quote-unquote published rules. We go back to our policy, and of course Shane, in the comment, our policy sounds too much like law. Well, obviously, we're going to have to change our policy to include water quantity too, as I understand that Dan and Roger talked about. So we would have to go back through and review our policy, add those language. We could modify the language at that time to make it sound less like it came right out of the law and make it more the policy. And that's something that if we get appropriated, if it looks like we are, maybe we ought to start that process, change in the policy.
Yeah, and we've also talked about whether the current statutory language is broad enough to encompass the projects what we have in mind, and if the statutory language needs to be broader or clarified, we can certainly advocate for that. So but I've got, we've got one, I can tell you, I won't tell you the name of the project, but I got a head, we've got Treasure Valley Water Association Headgate project that's just perfect for WAPPA, that's ready to go right now, for example.
And what'd you want, 2 million?
This project is modest. It's a $60,000 project.
Okay. Great.
Chairman, let me ask for Shane to weigh in on if we were to update, modify our policy as Chairman Wright has suggested here. Do you, are you comfortable with that as a way going forward to administer this program via some updated, modified policy versus reopening and rulemaking and that kind of thing? I'm kind of concerned with the governor's new zero-based rulemaking position, whether we, I would like, I think it's in our advantage to avoid rulemaking, if at all possible.
You know, obviously, you can't go wrong once you have a set of rules that have gone through the right process, because, like I said, they carry that force and effect of law. If it's your decision to go just with policy, I'm happy to help. I can look at those other programs and we can do our best. But yeah, like I said, you can't go wrong with rulemaking, so. It's not fun. I know nobody likes to do it, and it takes a long time, but yeah, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Shane.
I'm happy to work with you, Shane, on the question of whether or not the procedures that the commission would need to have in place qualify as a rule, meet the definition, meet the Idaho Supreme Court's definition of a rule. Those procedures generally relate to qualification eligibility criteria, what types of projects are eligible, what applications are to include, how the granting authority makes its decision, and then what contract, what's included in a grant contract? And maybe it's that latter part that might come closest to meeting the definition.
Hey, Dan, you're getting pretty lawyerly there, buddy.
I'm trying not to, but I can't help you with another, Shane, he must have talked.
So, bottom line, folks, what do we need to do today to assist going forward? What do you want from us?
Your support.
Yeah. No, I was going to say the same thing. Just your support, your formal support, so that we can proceed at the Capitol to get this funding.
And I think, Chairman, the recommendation, the motion that's printed at the bottom of your memo item would be a good way of formalizing your support and charting, of course, for the next step in this process.
I assume that you have, for purpose, that I was kind of going back to Roger and Dan to make sure that we were on the same page.
Perfect.
Because I believe going forward, obviously, we need their support and to make it happen. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I appreciate that. Shane?
I have one question you brought up. Do we have the personnel to put this money out? So Dylan, can you address that?
I will. Thanks, Commissioner. Yes, I'm confident that it will be a a, it'll take commitment on my part and on my staff's part, but I'm committed to making that commitment and making it work. And if we were funded at a $2 million per year appropriation level, we've got the staff out there, and I've talked with IACD's board on Sunday during their directors' meeting, that it will take us modifying our technical assistance request process somewhat, and districts will have to understand that we will, that our staff will be available to assist with implementation of WAPPA as a number-one priority, and then additional district projects ongoing. as a number one priority, and then additional district projects ongoing, three-nineteens and so forth, would be, fall the secondary priority. And my sense, if Devin or, or Steve can speak to it, my sense at the director's meeting was that they understand and support districts taking on some of the responsibility for administering a WAPPA program that does get funded as well. So I think we're all on the same page there.
Mr. Chairman. That is correct. Yep, Dylan, hundred percent supportive. Districts are going to have to understand that things are going to change a little bit, that the technical assistance is going to be a little bit different. Delivery in a different manner.
Excellent, yep.
But, and, and everybody was a hundred percent okay with that.
We also mentioned that we could be dovetailing with NRCS equip.
Right.
And obviously, some of that's going to be of assistance too.
Right, yes.
Well, geebers, looks like we're almost all on the same page, and that's scary. So before that changes, does someone like to make that a motion down there to bottom where the action item is?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to direct staff to work with IACD and stakeholders to develop a WAPPA policy, which will include approved water efficiency, water use efficiency as criteria for WAPPA funding.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Do we have further question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All same sign, motion carried. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time today and support.
Thank you for all your efforts. We look forward to talking to you more. Used to seeing you with weeds on your chest.
Little bit different topic today.
That motion support, I'm sorry, but that motion's, I'm going to put on my layer heading. That motion supports revising policy. Does that motion support legislative funding for WAPPA?
Doesn't specifically say that, does it?
It doesn't specifically say that, and, and Dan, as new as I am, I've got to admit, I'm not sure that we are
Able to, yeah.
Able to recommend something that's, in fact, I don't think we can recommend something that's not in the governor's budget. So I'm going to say no, that, that motion doesn't indicate support for WAPPA funding.
Well, yeah, I think it's more of a wink and a nod.
Right.
Yep.
That's understandable.
Officially, because, because that was my understanding as well, that as soon as the, the governor's budget comes out, we can't talk about anything anymore, so.
We'll do whatever we can to help you out.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It sounds great. We look forward to working with Benjamin then, so, yep.
Dylan, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Same to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we on that subject. Moving on to minutes, unless you have other things you want to talk about there, Dylan.
No.
Right? Item five is minutes. November eighteenth meeting. Has anyone had the opportunity to review those?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minutes as presented for November eightheenth.
I'll say that.
Okay, we have a motion for by Mr. Olson, Senator Ms. Pratt. Any question, motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried. Moving down to financial reports.
Good morning.
Morning.
inversion here, my allergies are picking up pretty good, so pardon me if I have to clear my throat.
So. We don't want to clear the room?
No. I've heard everybody's going to catch the new variant anyway, right? All right, so today's financial reports, fiscal matters, fiscal matters memo is broken into two sections, so I'll go ahead and just address the financial reports and the commissioner honorariums first, and then we'll address the rest of it. So for our January meeting here, the financial detail and fund summary, year-to-date reports are enclosed for the month ended November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Commissioner honorariums are shown below on the chart there. We have fifty-two percent of the honorarium allocations remaining yet for this fiscal year. Are there any questions on the commissioner honorariums, or we'll move on to the financial reports?
They should start doing a pretty good job of saving us money.
It is, yes. Yeah, that line's pretty easy to update. Okay, so we can go ahead and go to the November financial detail report. Starting on the top left there for general fund expenditures for personnel, as of the end of November, we're showing some significant salary savings from vacancies at this point, having expended thirty-four percent of our personnel funds for general fund at forty-two percent of the fiscal year completed. Operating expenditures, we have, I'd say probably all of the general expenditures, the big beginning of the year expenditures taken care of by this point out of operating funds for general fund at about seventy-four percent expended out of that. No appropriations and capital outlay for this fiscal year, so that's zero. Trusting benefits, of course, has been a hundred percent distributed. And the cash balance figures are on the right. Are there any questions on the general fund figures for November?
No.
Professional services moving down a line is unchanged except for a small amount of interest received in the cash balance on the right at twenty-seven dollars there. RCRDP loan administration moving down, personnel expenditures are about forty percent expended for the fiscal year. Operating expenditures is about nineteen percent of the expected expenditures for the year. Cash balances, of course, we've been receiving irregular loan payments. And we had just under eleven thousand dollars distributed it out so far this fiscal year as of November. Any questions on RCRDP? The revolving loan DEQ, the last lines there, no expenditures have been made out of that fund. We have received payments on that, and we have paid out some, you see on the far right on the bottom there where we paid about eighteen thousand dollars to DEQ pass-through from payments received us. Any questions on the DEQ loans? All right. Financial summary for November. On the top left, general fund personnel, you'll see our the funds carried or the figures carried over from the last financial sheet, and a remaining balance showing as of the end of the fiscal year, expected to be remaining is sitting at seventy-nine thousand dollars, again, due to those vacancies. The RCRDP loan administration personnel expenditures, again, about seventy-two thousand dollars expended. And we have a much thinner remaining balance on, expected at the end of the year for RCRDP. Operating funds out of general funds, we are on track for expenditures for that with about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars expended so far this year. Professional services, nothing expended. RCRDP, we've expended about thirty-two thousand dollars so far this fiscal year in operating. And the revolving loan, nothing has been expended out of that. Nothing in capital funds and trusting benefits, of course, a hundred percent expended. Any questions for November? Moving on to the financial detail report for the month ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, half of the year completed. Personnel expenditures and general fund on the top left at about forty-one percent. Operating funds expended are at about seventy-six percent. And nothing has changed a- as far as any cash receipts or anything moving to the right as far as cash balances and trusting benefits. Moving down to professional services, again, we see a little bump on the right for interest received, but nothing else has changed in professional services. RCRDP, under personnel expenditures is about forty-eight percent expended for the fiscal year. We've expended about twenty percent of the expected expenditures out of operating. And moving over to cash receipts, you see we've received quite a few payments between November and December. And have paid out some additional funds and loans issued. For the DEQ loan, last line down at the bottom, nothing expended. The amounts received for payments for us, we've received a couple of payments. You can see it's up to seventy-two thousand dollars received in payments for this loan to date through to December. And that is not yet reflected in the payments we've made to DEQ, but we did just recently make a payment to DEQ for that loan, so you'll see that on the January Any questions there? And the financial summary, personnel funds out of general fund, we've expended about five hundred thirty-eight thousand. And with the continued vacancies, we're up to about eighty-two thousand in expected remaining at the end of the fiscal year. RCRDP, we've expended just under eighty-six thousand dollars in personnel funds. Operating funds expended out of general fund are just under a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Nothing expended out of professional services. RCRDP expenditures are just under thirty-three thousand dollars. Nothing expended out of the revolving loan. No expenditures out of capital funds, and of course, the trusting benefits all distributed. Any questions at all on the financials for
Not on so much of the financials, but what's the status of
Okay.
All right. So fiscal matters, I'll just go ahead and read this out. The commission's staff laptop computers were mainly purchased in twenty fifteen with only one being purchased in twenty sixteen. And guidance from the Office of Information Technology Services, ITS, shows a recommended replacement cycle of four years. In lieu of requesting funding for new computers, new hard drives were purchased and installed in twenty nineteen. However, staff have been increasingly experiencing functional issues and failures requiring repair and replacement. As no ref- no replacement funding was appropriated in either FY twenty-one or twenty-two, we purchased four laptops out of the FY twenty-two operating funds early in the fiscal year as a contingency for failures, and all four have been placed in service at this point. The commission has requested funding to replace six laptop computers in the FY twenty-three budget request, and this leaves yet another eight in need of replacement. Due to a reduction in FTPs over the last few years, the commission does have excess vehicles and proposes to surplus two trucks and use the funds to purchase the needed laptop computers. Otherwise, we're looking at not replacing them until FY twenty-four. The Division of Financial Management has provided instructions on how to use these capital funds received from the sale of the trucks to purchase the computers. So that we've included as a recommended action of approving, of sending the surplus to the commission's vehicles and of using the funds received from the sale to purchase replacement laptop computers, granting authority to the administrator to determine the vehicles to be sold.
How many computers are we trying to replace? With that funding?
From the trucks? Eight. Hopefully, eight.
And what's the cost of eight?
I believe they cost about twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars per, right?
Including, if I remember correctly, including the docking stations that are required so that the staff can have extra monitors, it's roughly two thousand per computer and docking station.
All right, so yeah, sixteen thousand dollars, and we can't reuse the old docking stations with the new computers because of course they've changed the connections.
What I'm driving at is, is, I don't know what the two vehicles were worth, one vehicle, or I don't know what the value is, but if we get more money back than the sixteen thousand dollars for the things that we need, where's the extra going to go?
I would suggest to go to additional computers, because that, that, this takes care of what Rachel's talking, you're talking about.
Just replacing.
Replacing six of them, eight, eight, and that leaves six yet to be replaced, is that?
But no, we're trying to replace the eight with the trucks if we can, if that much money. We've requested six in FY twenty twenty-three as a budget.
Oh, okay. But if we, if our truck sold for enough to buy ten, then we could use those extra funds to buy two additional ones, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we would have to use it for capital expenditures, and so I had thought about that. I have no idea what they would go for. I know they have to go to, well, we'll have to post them to see if other agencies want to purchase them first, and then they'll likely get sent to auction, and then they take their cut. If we end up with money left over, of course, we'll have to discuss where we want to extend that, but it would have to be a capital expenditure.
Okay, so we could use it for something else on capital expenditure.
So what two vehicles did you have in mind?
We've got one of the old oh-six Chevys that, that we've had.
It's actually Eileen's old pickup truck. So it's one of the larger two thousand six F-one-fifties with the extended cab. The other vehicle is the, I've forgotten what year it is, but it's the Explorer that Derek previously used during the grant position, which is well over mileage to be on the replacement schedule. We retained it in order for him to have a vehicle without having to purchase a new one for that grant position.
Oh-six and that one.
I think they're both oh-six, honestly.
The used pickup market is on fire.
Yeah, we're excited about that, and that, you know, it's, that could be in our favor.
I've been anxious to get rid of them since the beginning of the, the fiscal year. We've just been waiting for word on DFM, whether we would be able to use them for the computers or not, honestly.
Because, yeah, because otherwise they were capital funds used to purchase them, so we have to turn around and extend that on capital expenditures. And having no appropriation for this year to expand it, we need to make sure that we would just be selling them and then just sending the money back.
Especially if we have a good use for. Okay. So are you done now?
Again, none, unless there's any other questions. The recommended actions would be to approve the financial reports for the month ended November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And the vehicles.
So, item number one, financial reports for month ended November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, we'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve financial reports for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as presented.
I'll second. Good, a motion on floor by Ms. Romer, second by Mr. Olson, to approve financial reports November thirtieth. Further question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all same sign, motion carried. Item number two, December thirty-first financial.
I'll make that motion to approve the financial reports for the month ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
I'll second the motion.
My commission Romer. The motion filed by Commissioner Pratt and seconded by Commissioner Romer to approve December thirty-first. Further question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All same sign, motion carried. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the, approve of sending a surplus of two, of the two commission vehicles and of using the funds received from the sale to purchase replacement laptop computers, granting authority to the administrator to determine the vehicles to be sold. To purchase replacement laptop computers granting authority to the administrator to determine the vehicles to be sold.
Okay, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Olson, and seconded by Commissioner Pratt, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, post, same side, motion carry. Sales and drugs. Our non-action item there, that's commission and staff, do we have any other comments that we want to make at this time? The only thing I would like to say would be reiterate, I think some of the things have been said already. Yesterday's meeting by ISCD was interesting. I'm glad that Mister Becker was running, not me, so. I understand Zoom, all the problems you have with that, I've been on more meetings and I can realize that that's happened, so. I don't wish that onto anybody, but you managed to get through it, so that's the most important thing. And nobody was having fist to cuff, so God, we're in great shape. Great job, Mister Becker. With that, maybe all. You know, these kudos to Devon, nice job on the social last night, Devon, we don't want to tell him that, you know, so. Anyway, no, it was turned out pretty eyes and it appeared you have a pretty good. Return of a number of people there much later, so I was close to check off list there. And I think that that's growing all the time too. Miaum stuck around a little longer too, I talked to two or three, thought they'd always. You know, rush off to school more and they says, no, we're not going. So I don't know what was going on, but because that's been our past or biggest draw. They slipped in there for about five minutes, oh, and leave, but. Something stuck around for quite a while, so. And it's great, so I appreciate that, gentlemen, and I know that that's not the easiest thing to set up and. Sometimes things are under control, but. Okay, is there anybody else that have any comments? Say, oh, I should have left Joe including on that too, I forgot you're online there. And gave kudos to Devon and Becker, not you, sorry. Manager's report at this time, Mister Trumps.
Thank you, Chairman. First thing I'm going to cover in my report is the governor's fiscal twenty twenty three commission budget. Our fiscal. Commission budget as presented to the legislature in the legislative budget book is attached. The governor accepted our budget request in its entirety with the following minor changes. The governor increased funding for personnel benefit costs based on most recent cost projections. That were available to him and not available to us when we developed our budget request. He allocated or the allocated. Let me start this one over again, another one of the changes was allocated the funds requested for laptop replacement. To federal ARPA rather than state general funds. The third change was an increased personnel funding based on the governor's recommended five percent total CEC for employees. So those were the only three changes made to our budget request and. The governor's budget is attached. Rachel reported on additional budget developments in her financial report. Are there any questions related to our, to our, the governor's recommended budget for the commission?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, which doesn't take much. On your item eight one. Going across on trustee and benefits, it jumps from one point four to three point one. I don't know how we got.
Okay, you're looking at the trustee and benefits line there?
Yeah, historical summary.
Say that once more.
Okay, she fills an appropriation for twenty two of one point four. Two eight million and then for the request for twenty three, it goes to three point one four three million. Those guys.
You know Rachel's going to handle that.
I was kind of, I was looking at this when I first reviewed this, I'm going, wait a minute, I know what they got about, but I didn't know it was two million dollars.
No, and I had seen that too, but I wasn't going to bring it up.
Rachel, what can you, what can you, how can you clarify this?
To get the actual figures, I'd have to pull what we actually had actually submitted, but. Yeah, they didn't change what we'd requested, so like we addressed before in prior meetings. We were limited to how much we could request for increases in our FY twenty twenty three budget by, I think it was a three percent. Well, we had a cap anyway and pretty much we took the increase of what we could go up to for that cap and put it in trust and benefits.
Supposed to be that much? Like one point five seven, it seems like that was. Like they got, got doubled somehow.
This, this is right out of the legislative budget book, so it's.
Maybe we should just keep our mouth shut.
And Chairman, when I was preparing my, my report here, my remarks, I went through and looked at the budget legislative budget book. Looked at all the red lettered items which indicate changes from recommended versus budget recommendation on the governor's part. And there was no red, red ink there, so. So that, this is the first time I, I noticed that. We will follow up on that and get back.
Do it, just be quiet, I'll, I'll shut up and sit.
Now I understand.
I'm sorry, Yogi, was that, I didn't really mean to do that, I'll take all that back, Shane, plug your ears.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry.
No, no, absolutely, good, good catch, Chairman, and we'll, we'll get a hold of. We'll be in touch with the governor's office immediately after this meeting. Find out what's going on there. Any other, any other thing catches or questions or comments on the budget? All right, hearing none, I'll move on and a quick note on the ISCD directors and business meetings, the ISCD directors met. Sunday, January sixteenth. At President Becker's invitation, I attended that meeting and we had a. Mutually, I believe, productive conversation about a number of issues, including WATPA. Our budget request and. Am I forgetting anything, Devon or Steve? It was, absolutely. Yeah, our, our, and I think we. It was, it was definitely a benefit to me, to the commission. That, that I was able to participate in that director's meeting and I appreciate that opportunity. And of course, most of us here did attend the ISCD business meeting and legislative social held in Boise. Last, yesterday afternoon and evening. And if any commissioners that are here or others would like to report on anything that transpired during those events. Please do so now. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Any other contributions, anybody wants to make, comments about the, the business meeting and social?
I would say the social for me was productive. Yeah, business meetings, I've been to. A number of those throughout the years and they all have their challenges and. Always a great forum for discussion, which I think happened there, so. Far for the course, really, in my book. Well, it's the first one I've been to. Due to the pandemic, so it was great to meet you all and we had some great conversations, very. Honest and didn't agree on everything, but I learned a lot, enjoyed it.
Excellent. I felt like the, especially the social, it was a great. Door opener, whatever, and, and a lot of the conversations I had will lead to additional conversations. And, and it was a good, a good chance to get introduced or to introduce myself to some of those legislators that I've never actually met before. And shake their hands and, and kind of, I'm sure we'll, it's the beginning of relationships that will continue to develop as time goes on, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good point because I made a point of emphasizing the reestablishing. Reestablishment of relationships and, and you as our new director, Dylan. And then the appointment of two new board members sort of sets the tone for the right direction moving forward. So that was my emphasis in my discussion with legislators.
Very good. It was a fun time as well. Moving on to the twenty twenty two Larry Brandon Idaho Egg Summit. Attached is information from the Larry Brandon Idaho Egg Summit announcing this year's event. The theme of the twenty twenty two summit is quote, meeting the challenges, end quote. And it's scheduled for February twenty through twenty two here in Boise. The annual legislative strolling supper will be held Monday night, February twenty first. Followed by the governor's award luncheon on Tuesday, February twenty second. Particularly, particularly relevant and exciting to your board is that the governor's education. And advocacy award will be presented to Commissioner Pratt and her husband Mark at this year's event. So congratulations to, to Commissioner Pratt. Note also that your February board meeting is scheduled for nine AM Wednesday, Wednesday, February twenty third. To coincide with the egg summit. And I think really, if you haven't done so yet. Each of you needs to let Crystal know what your plans are for the summit, when you're coming into town, when you need rooms for and what events you're.
Information you need from each other, Crystal, or what more information you need from us?
I think I have confirmation from all four commissioners that they ju- that they intend, intend to be there. I'll just need to know travel plans, if you need any flights, Eric or Kathy, you need a, a car. I mean, you can let me know that after the meeting.
Good, thank you, Crystal. A note on the partnership strategic plan update, and this is something that. I visited about with directors of ISCD also is, and Curtis was present at that meeting and he's been party to this. This, this process of coming up with a strategic plan. After considerable thought and discussion on the part of NRCS, IASCD, IDEA and commission staff. Related to the development of a shared partnership strategic plan, we are moving towards agreement that the best way forward. At this point may be to reinvigorate the Idaho Conservation Partnership Statement of Cooperation, last updated in two thousand and eleven. And a copy of that agreement is attached. We intend to complete a review of the partnership statement over the next year and have an update, updated version. Ready for ratification and signing during the twenty twenty three annual ISCD conference. The last time we ratified the body of the partnership ratified and signed that agreement was November during annual conference of two thousand and eleven. So we're, we're thinking of going through, making any updates or modifications that might be necessary and, and. Getting your board's participation as we go through that update process. As ISCD will be working in Curtis with his leadership and then have something ready, a new. Statement of cooperation, a partnership statement ready to sign next year at conference.
Didn't we attempt something similar not a couple of years ago or something, or what was that we looked at? The mission statement, I think it was.
That could be, mission statement, and then there was the MOU between the districts and the commission. And so it's been a lot of discussion over the last two years on that. That's more of an NRCS effort and I think they've not wrapped it up. So we'll, 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 we'll update you as we go through that process. I don't know how much updating or revising that will be deemed appropriate, but we'll, I'll keep you posted. The, before, the upcoming commission meeting schedule then is attached, our next meeting, as I noted earlier, is February twenty third. Nine to twelve here in Boise. And I did want to note, I had an email in my inbox this morning from House Egg Rules. Committee that they want me to present the ru- our rules docket this Thursday at one thirty PM. And, and. Present to the House Egg Affairs Committee our performance report Tuesday, February first at eight AM. And I have not heard from Senate Egg on, on when we're scheduled to present there, we are presenting at JFA. The twenty seven, twenty sixth of February. Twenty third of February. Yeah, whatever. That's right, and Rachel and I, this week, that's our top priority is getting our JFA presentation put together, we're working with Rob Seppich. At LSO and our given analysts to. Actually, this year they've changed up the format, they're going back to more, where Rob will introduce it and go through line items which. And, and some of the, hit some of the high points and then the administrator gives a brief synopsis of accomplishments. Over the year, somewhat, what it, what it appears to be kind of a cond- condensation of my. Presentation to the germane committees, but it's just a short one and, and then Rachel will present our budget in detail. And we're permitted to give, present, include up to eight slides in a PowerPoint presentation, so. It's, they're, they're trying to keep some sideboards around it so it doesn't go whole hog like. But they are opening it back up to where the agency has more of a role than just to sit there and, and.
Smile.
Smile.
Supposed to be primarily just on the budget, are they?
They gave us out a, a, some, some real. Guidance on that and I can share that with you, they suggested that three slides for the inter- for my introductory remarks and. One slide for line items and one slide for supplementals and. You know, they kind of go through, have sort of a rigid, honestly, I haven't paid that much attention to it until today. Because like I said, after today, then Rachel and I are, are turning all of our focus on that, but I've been preparing my germane committees. Presentations because I'm not, because I have not heard when Senate is going to be ready for me and I want to make sure that was ready in case they. Called up and said, oh yeah, you're up this afternoon.
So the slides are primarily just budget information form, right?
Yeah, in my report, I'll include some, just some, I'm, I'm hoping maybe a picture of the Harris rant.
Wondering is, yes, I've seen this done, you can put a interesting picture of a conservation project in the background. And put your numbers in the foreground and it might say, somebody might say, what's that? Plug in.
We intend to employ all of our marketing. Expertise, everything available to us to do as good a job of presenting. And during our germane committee presentations, egg affairs in the senate and the house. Steve Becker is, or somebody on his behalf from ISCD is going to join us for that presentation. When I get done with my presentation and now we'll coordinate together so that Steve will know what my presentation looks like, then they're going to come in. so that Steve will know what my presentation looks like. Then they're going to come in with the, the district perspective, the I A C D perspective on, on, and, and a report on more focused on district accomplishments over the year, whereas we kind of limit ours focus on commission accomplishments. And though part of our accomplishments are the T A we provide and the others just we provide to district. We think it's important to go back to, as we did years ago, go back to I A C D joining us to again demonstrate to the committee members that we are a partnership and, and and so that I'm excited about returning to that format.
Are you prepping?
Yeah. Commissioner Roemer.
I feel confident.
I, I always have at least two or three ready to go at any time.
You're previously prepped.
I've gotten used to it because there's been times where committee chairman has called me on Friday afternoon and said, oh, Mr. Becker, could you be here Monday?
Sure. Just jot down the road.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So if there's no more discussion or questions or comments, that concludes my administrator's report and it was strictly for your information.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, look like Loretta's up.
Thank you, Truman. Right. District Support Services update. Fiscal year 2022 technical assistance update. Despite another year of COVID-19 restrictions and challenges, the commission staff and districts did a remarkable job of still getting conservation on the ground and getting business done the best way we can. The attached fiscal year 2022 technical assistance hours requested, allocated and provided spreadsheet shows our progress towards meeting our TA requests for the first half of fiscal year 2022. Another challenge to note this year is our open engineering position that primarily serves divisions five and six. Bill Littlebridge, you know, is our lead engineer and only engineer currently is really doing his best to work with all those districts from that area to help fulfill those requests. But he's getting spreads then across the entire state. We've been fortunate to have been able to use some of the salary savings from that position to contract engineering support for that area. And that's not really financially sustainable. So it's our best interest to work to fill that vacant position. And I'll discuss that later in this memo. District performance reports, all 50 districts submitted their performance reports. I reviewed to make sure that they have the certification page and they will be uploaded to our website soon. New working title, new working job title for W Q R Cs. Traditionally, our field staff have been hired as water quality resource conservationists or W Q R Cs for short. It is, was recently brought to our attention that our job title may be confusing to some and limit the perception of our qualifications and expertise. So after some research and feedback from the Department of Human Resources, we found out that the task of officially creating a new class title would be pretty cumbersome. But we could however, use whatever working title we deemed fit. So the leadership team discussed the poss- possibility of a change and agreed that now would be a good time to do it to update the title to reflect our qualifications and expertise more broadly. So the official class title will remain W Q R Water Quality Resource Conservationist and the new working title going forward will be Natural Resource Conservationist. Open staff positions update, the Natural Resource Conservationist in Emmett. This vacant division three natural resource conservation position announcement will be posted in January. This is the position that is being vacated by me and was previously a three quarter time position. It will be filled as a 40 hour position and will cover Valley, Squaw Creek, Gem, Payette, Meese River and Adams, one more conservation districts.
I had a couple of people ask me when that was going to be filled last night. So.
Yeah, pretty soon. Crep manager, Rob Sharknet has accepted the Crep manager position that was vacated by Chuck Pincer last November. Rob has been with the commission for nine years as the Water Quality Resource Con in the Shoshone area and worked with seven districts. He's also been providing technical assistance to the Crep contracts. So Chuck left some big shoes to fill and we all miss Chuck, but Rob will do an amazing job in that position. So this promotion that will open up a natural resource conservation, conservationist position. The leadership team is currently strategizing whether there's a better location for this position that will provide a greater number of districts with some more effective service that makes more sense geographically. This position covers a very large area and some of the more remote areas of the state. Ideas to ship some of those seven districts to nearby natural resource cons or W Q R Cs where it makes sense and blends with their current districts. So this should leave about four to five districts with common land resources and needs for the new position. And we will fill that as the three quarter position. Staff engineer for Eastern Idaho. As you all know, we have been unsuccessful in our attempts to fill the vacant engineering position in Eastern Idaho. This hiring problem is not just isolated to the commission, but is a problem for other state agencies who are looking to fill engineering positions as well. We know that one of the factors contributing to this is our inability to match private sector salaries. And Rachel has also recently learned that we're able to offer signing bonuses. So she's working out those logistics. And if you have any more questions, I'm gonna bring those to her. But we're hoping this, this extra incentive will increase our hiring chances down there. So we're planning on posting that position in January as well.
Didn't, so the last one, Bill just about had signed, did D Q make him up?
Private industry.
Oh, private industry.
So it's a huge obstacle.
Yeah, we have got to find somebody.
What type of bonus we talking about?
We discussed the L T or leadership team discussed the $3,000 signing bonus. And of course, the state limitations on these bonuses, the risk we take with that is we can pay the $3,000 bonus out of this year's personnel salary savings. If we can get somebody in prior to the end of the fiscal year. But we have no protections if that person decides to leave early or if they don't work out. So basically we can, we could do some other agencies are doing it, put in place a kind of an end of probation period payout, which then is my understanding, we would be able to put in place some protections for them to have payback under certain circumstances, but that would mean we would have to pay it out of next fiscal year's personnel funds. And I just don't know if we're going to have the funds available to do that if we're fully staffed by then. So that's what we have discussed. There has been an inquiry. There was an inquiry that somebody who asked if we would be able to cover moving expenses. And we figured if we do that upfront, they could use that for whatever it's coming out of our salary savings funds. It's not coming out of operating. So that's the discussion point right now is I think we're probably fairly settled on offering a $3,000 upfront sign on bonus. And then relisting that position. So D H R did ask about looking at to see if we could change our pay rate. I'm not sure. You know, I wish we could tell the future, but we don't want to end up paying too much over the long run. It obviously is one of the higher paid positions for our agency. So yeah, we, we've discussed various things, but like Loretta said, it is not just an issue with us. This is a statewide issue and it has been in the news lately. I thought that was pretty interesting. I think they said a 12% vacancy in state jobs. So it's not just engineers, but that is one of the hardest hit ones right now.
And plus that, that money that doesn't get spent in the personal budget that goes back to the general fund.
Says no bear.
Yeah. So we don't get to roll that over the next year, which would be nice, but no.
So what's our offering salary right now?
I, I believe I'd have to double check the payroll projection, but I believe we'd estimate it at 29 an hour. I think is what we estimated our payroll projection at. And we typically run a pretty thin cushion as far as our personnel budget in general funds.
We've been advertising two different positions, a staff engineer, which is a P E, a real engineer and a associate. Associate engineer, which is kind of an in training deal. And, and the, the staff engineer is in that $29 per hour salary range and the, the associate is 27, I want to say, I forget.
25 to 27 is what it was advertised for, if I remember correctly last time, Mr. Chair.
So we are continuing to work and, and I think we've got as good a strategy as we can put together. I think the signing bonus. Well, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. If it takes $3,000 to interest somebody to, to apply for the job, I hope they're really serious about the job. It's not risk, but that's kind of a risk we have to take. And I think with by rigorous screening of whoever applies, by hoping that somebody applies to begin with. Remember last time we announced that we didn't get any applications for either position at all. So we've got to do something. This seems like the least risky way forward. We can't over complicate ourselves like Rachel was saying and end up having personnel fund deficit next year.
Yeah.
Despite how flush we are this year.
I would like to see a third engineer, but I know that's a big ask and we need a third one because Bill's way too spread too thin, even when there is two, I think, especially up our way. He drives you know, nice, sort of his time is driving up our way, four hours, you know, and then he's there for half an hour and then he's done. Because he doesn't have any time left. So I would eventually like to see somebody at Coral Lane area in the future, if you know, down the road. I'd really like to see that. And that's something that we need to work on the legislature with or whatever. Especially now, if we get these lock pop funds, I know you're, you're pretty optimistic, but I can see that we're going to have some shortages on people that get this stuff implemented too.
Well, when this building boom does slow down, it's easier time getting hold of ones.
Hopefully.
Just to dampen your optimism, it appears of all the money going into, that's going head towards road and bridges. They've already, the I T Bs are been told there's not enough contractors and people can do the projects. And you can't move up ones from other state because guess what? They're in same boat, we're in. And the private people said, we're already booked up. So it's not, we're getting better for the foreseeable future. I'm sorry to say. Because those projects were talking hundreds of millions of dollars.
So with this idea of contracting, is that going to maybe be our reality? How did it go?
It's going really well. The problem with it is Wendy, it's like Rachel said, it's not sustainable because this year we have additional, we have payroll savings because of our open positions. When we get fully staffed, we don't have any payroll savings, very little, you know? I mean, we have to maintain a certain amount as a buffer that's required to maintain in case I retire and you have to pay me out or if somebody else retired, you have to pay us a payout. But so you see what I'm saying? This year we're in a unique position where we have that 70, $80,000 of payroll savings, personnel savings that D F M has or H R, somebody has allowed us to, to use to buy a contract engineer.
They're allowing us to roll funds from personnel to operating to cover some contract services because of the situation. So it's not actually coming out of our operating funds, which is good because we're already using those. And looking to the future too, that were just, we have some compensation issues in other classes of employees that are going to need to be addressed over the next few years with a game plan to kind of stem our flow of people leaving. Um, so it's not just the engineer position. We have to address the compensation for some of our others as well going forward. And like I said, we have very, very thin cushion in personnel funds general.
So this is a u- unique year. And actually, Commissioner, one thing that, that we need to spend some more time, I need to spend some more time visiting with our federal partners is all the engineers and engineer techs that Curtis is firing. See if, if perhaps there's a possibility that we can form some kind of a partnership with them where, I mean, and I don't know, I know from what I hear from their field office, their engineering staff are overworked as well. But perhaps with all the additional hires that he may be able to assist in some instances with, with engineering for our projects. Well, we'll I'll follow up with that.
Same issue though. They have a ton of money flowing to them that they're going to have to deal with and distribute and.
Yeah, I don't know how his hiring is done as far as I know he's trying to hire a lot of engineers, engineering techs. I think that from my half understood, their engineering techs are getting some hired, but I don't know how successful they've been engineering here because there's a small pool out there that we're trying to draw from.
And, and I don't know what that number is either, how many actual engineers have been fired versus how many engineers.
That's a question I want to ask him in the future. He told me last night that as of February 3rd, he'll be back.
Well, I know the state C E C committee is meeting subcommittee and they've asked for my comments and I, and I'm, I'm preparing those. And I'm sure they will hear, H R has told me they're going to hear from a lot of agency on, on this exact kind of challenge that we're all facing. It may be just like the minimum wage at McDonald's has jumped from seven to $14. It may be that the state's going to have to bite the bullet and compensate the engineers that more going right. I don't know.
I have a question for the very. So when you mentioned one position that the gentleman or whoever was lost to private industry, you have any comps on that or do you know what it was or like a salary that was offered?
Yeah, and the, and, and the work was this similar work, same work in a private industry or maybe you don't know. I just have it.
Don't remember the industry, but I think the salary was a hundred thousand.
It was a six figure salary, if I remember correctly. It was egg industry.
And they weren't overqualified for the position that was offered here.
No, they were a P. They would have been hired at the staff engineer. And they had all the required credentials. So yeah, credit, they had all the licensing.
Yeah.
He was a good, he would have been a good fit, but he went where the money was.
You know, just to comment on that. And maybe this is one thing we need to stress. I T Bs picked up engineers out of the private that have gone into public for this reason. One of them, he dropped $30,000 a year to go to I T D. And the reason why is I T D, just like we are, it is a 40 hour a week job. If you work more than that, you get, you know, paid overtime or comp time, or the case may be. But as a private engineer working for a private company, he said he spent a lot of 60, 70 hour weeks and he was a young man, had a younger family. He didn't see his family for 25% of the time. He never missed all these kids' baseball games. So I, and so he said, you know, the money is not everything. It is the benefits and the set time of day. So he says, I'm home nights. I can go to my son's baseball games and football games and all that before. I'd be in Timbuktu and couldn't make it. So I think that's something that maybe when you talk and interview with people say, just want to stay. Look at the job hours here instead of, we're not requiring you to work on Saturdays and Sundays at midnight.
And we, we've actually for Bill's suggestion, added a bunch of narrative bullet list of, of the describing the kind of benefits that you're talking about that are available to, the flexibility and that kind of thing. It's quite a quite a list of things for, for potential applicants to consider and exactly those kinds.
Really tried. They picked up the last five years, like three or four out of private industry and said, I'm tired. They're burning me out. I'm tired. So they're getting out. Yeah, I can make the money, but life is another thing too.
Our benefits perceived, good seller. So we'll get some.
See how they're getting these guys' attention without having to know what they're doing upfront.
College graduations are coming up. So maybe they're.
I was actually just going to say, I'm a recent graduate and could, since I'm, I'm going to B C right now, we could also put a, a bug in the air at the College of Engineering over there and they'll distribute my email.
And that's a good point. You know, my son used to teach over there and the classes he was teaching was at the senior level. So the people he was taught to, the ones that were graduates. And he had the opportunity to go through that class and say, we need him, him and her. And they asked them to come to I T D and do a trainee, trainee program over the summer between their junior and senior year. And guess some of those people they picked up, Dr. Every one of them they picked up. Between their junior and senior year and guess how many of those people they picked up, I don't know, everyone of them they picked up. So there's another thought, maybe there's a trainee program that we can work at. As apprenticeship because let's be honest about it, you have to do five years of work before you can become a P E. But you can start that during the summertime.
Yeah.
Just.
And, and that's what our, our listing for the associate engineer position, that's what we're targeting there. Get somebody that has an interest in the background in engineering, but. Still has some, some.
I'm assuming you're looking at the ones that's already graduated from college. I'm thinking maybe there's a third position here of a trainee. Maybe there's a chance we could hire trainees the summertime. And involve them and get them excited about it. Summertime is a busy time. Maybe you can pick up a trainee for three months a year. Just looking for options.
We didn't discuss that though, and so I'm actually in the college of engineering, so.
Yeah.
I'm actually in some of my classes with civil engineer leaders, so.
We, we will discuss that at leadership unit. I know that Bill isn't, is in contact with deans of colleges of engineering around the West. And, and, and I don't know how regularly, but he has reached out to them asking for recommendations of undergraduates, people that have come up and graduated. That hasn't borne us any fruit yet, but we'll, we'll continue to, those are great ideas.
I was just looking at to that junior and senior year where they're just about done and maybe there's a three-month program that we could find it. That'd be a heck of a good time to help out. We could hire a couple of them that three months a year.
Yeah, you know, NRCS is bringing on a lot of new ones, so if we can team up with them for the training and, you know, get in on some of the trainings.
I know Bill has expressed nervousness about that because he, it's like when you teach your kid how to cut the grass for the first time, you know. It sometimes sees you or take you to play video games on the grass. And, and if it is, but if we had a trainee that was in Coral Lane, let's say, where there is a lot of work and where it's close, relatively.
To Bill.
To Bill where he could, you could spend some time mentoring them rather than having to go down to Soho Spring in some place for the mentoring.
A lot of those engineers are coming out of East Miami too, so. But could you work with this kind of man, could you work with NRCS or that person could. Work under their auspices, they could help out them a bit, but sideways. Oh, by the way, you can help us with our project. I'm thinking, I gotta think outside the box sometimes.
Got to.
The box ain't working, so let's kick the holes in the side. Okay.
Great discussion. Thank you guys.
Hey, so actually, until, do we have any further discussion being? I don't believe we do, do we? So with that, I'd like to conclude our being today. Thank you for all being online. And, uh, also for the audience in person here, thank you. You're asked to come anytime. The way problem I have to tell you right now is, is I might ask a question out here, put you on the spot, but. You can always say, I, you know, adhere to someone else. You got big shits, Dallas, what the heck? Backer just had a big. No, I appreciate that. I'm not, not fun at this.
No.
Oh, yeah, exactly. We put that, thank you very much. We'll end this before I get into any more trouble. Thank you again for all attending. Have a good day.